Good morning Chairman.
Morning everyone. I make it just after ten o'clock, so welcome to this online meeting of the Public Protection and Community Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Nigel Pepper and I am the chairman of this committee. This is a formal public meeting and the audio feed of this meeting is being broadcast via the county council's website. I would like to welcome the members of the press and public who are listening to this online. Before we begin, I'd like to confirm who is present. So Emily Wilcox, the Democratic Services Officer, will ask members to indicate their presence after their name is called. Just to say, when invited to speak, you should unmute your microphones and switch on your video. When you're not participating in the meeting, please make sure you have muted your microphone and switched off your video, please. So over to you Emily.
Thank you Chairman. Councillor Aaron?
Present.
Councillor Clark?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Here, present.
Councillor Lawton?
Present.
Councillor Oxby?
Present.
Councillor Linda Wooton?
Present.
Councillor Ray Wooton?
Present.
Councillor Thompson?
Present.
Councillor Worth?
Present.
Councillor Young?
Present.
Councillor Corey? Councillor Corey?
Present.
Thank you. We also have the following officers in attendance today. Les Britzman, Chief Fire Officer and Executive Director for Fire Rescue and Public Protection. Louise Egan, Library and Heritage Client Lead. Tim Joyce, Area Manager, Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue. Will Mason, Head of Culture. Nicola Rogers, GLL. Daniel Steele, Scrutiny Officer. And Jade Sullivan, Community Safety Strategy Coordinator and Domestic Abuse Lead. Thank you Chairman.
Okay, thank you for that Emily, but before we move on, has anyone not had their name called who is attending today? So if so, please speak now. Okay, thank you. Just moving on, I would like to ask members of the committee and other participants to type 'speak' in the chat when you wish to ask a question or make a contribution. Please can you keep your questions and contributions succinct and concise? Also, just a reminder, please turn off your camera and microphone when not participating in the meeting. Can I also ask that members who are intending to leave the meeting indicate using the chat function? Officers do not need to do so. You'll be pleased to know we'll now move on to the formal agenda. Item one, apologies for absence, replacement members. Over to you again Emily.
Thank you Chairman. We've received apologies from Councillor Stokes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And any replacement members there?
No, no replacement members today.
Item two of the agenda is declarations of members' interests. Do members have any interest to declare? If so, please type 'speak' in the meeting chat now. No, I can't see any coming. So item three, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 17th of March. If you can remember that far back. This item is to confirm the minutes of our previous meeting held on the 17th of March 2020 as a correct record. I'll go through the pages for accuracy only, so starting on page five, page six, page seven, page eight, and finally page nine. Okay. Can I have a proposer and seconder for those please? Proposer, so Councillor Linda Wooton has proposed. Just need someone to second those.
Second.
Is that you Nick?
No, Bill.
Bill. Thank you Councillor Aaron for seconding those. We're now just fed a vote on those minutes. You're voting on whether you agree and that the minutes are a correct record. Emily will call out the name of each member present in alphabetical order and you're asked to state for, against, or abstain. Over to you Emily.
Thank you Chairman. Councillor Aaron?
For.
Councillor Clark?
For.
Councillor Cook? Councillor Cook, apologies, abstain, because I wasn't there. Thank you. Councillor Lawton?
Abstain, I wasn't there.
Councillor Oxby?
Abstain.
Councillor Pepper?
For.
Councillor Linda Wooton?
For.
Councillor Ray Wooton?
For.
Thank you, they're carried Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Item four is announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I'd just like to extend thanks of this committee to Timothy Brennan. He's the Senior Coroner for Lincolnshire, who is leaving to take up the Senior Coroner post in Manchester West. I'd also like to congratulate Paul Smith, who is due to become the Acting Senior Coroner for Lincolnshire from the first of September for a minimum period of 12 months. Whilst the transformation project is carried out to include a look at potential merger with North and North East Lincolnshire Coronial Area. Executive councillors, are there any announcements to make? No, all very quiet.
No.
Okay, Councillor Worth, any announcements?
No, thank you Chairman, I think you've done mine for me.
Okay, thank you, even better, on your part. Okay, lead officers, any lead officers there? Would like to make any comments, announcements at this stage?
Yes, thank you Chairman, if I may, good morning Chairman and councillors, members of committee. Just a slight update on the Fire Rescue and Public Protection structure. It's slightly outdated because of the time coming of meeting. At present, Dan Coulson, who's the Assistant Director for Public Protection, is still seconded into the LRF working on the recovery part of the LRF work. At present, Sarah Barry is Acting Assistant Director and her post is backfillers Head of Service shared between Claire Newborn and Mark Keel. That's currently the structure in place at the moment in Fire Rescue and Public Protection. Just briefly as well, just a quick thank you to the members on my team who are present today. So Tim Joyce is going to be covering the Blue Light Project and South Park. I think anecdotally, what I've heard, which may not be sort of indicated in the report, is how successful that project has been. I've heard a lot of very, very positive comments from members of staff from all services who work there. So I think it's another reflection of the success of collaborative working with Blue Light Services. Also, Tim is going to cover a little bit more detail, the ongoing work of the Blue Light Collaboration Group. There was a number of project groups that sat underneath the Blue Light Steering Group. So the Blue Light Steering Group, which I chair, is still live, but the smaller delivery groups are being coordinated and put into a new collaboration delivery group, which we've just provided some terms of reference for. And part of visiting work in order to refresh that and bring that up to date. And just finally, thank you to Jade as well, who will be commenting today on the work in relation to domestic abuse. Obviously in line with the COVID impact of the last few months and the concerns that that has perhaps highlighted during lockdown. There's also some ongoing legislation changes that will be coming in later in the year and we will be commenting or we'll bring a paper to CLT on the 4th of August to discuss those legislative changes. That's all from me Chairman.
Thank you Chief Officer for that, quite a few things going on there. Thank you for the update, thank you. Okay, so next is item five, performance of the library services contract, Year Four Review Report. This item invites the scrutiny committee to consider and scrutinise the ongoing performance of the outsourced library contract to Greenwich Leisure Limited. This report covers the Year Four Performance Information. The item will be presented by Will Mason, who's Head of Culture, and Louise Egan, Library and Heritage Client Lead. I'd also like to welcome Nicola Rogers from Greenwich Ledger back to the committee. Just a reminder, if you'd like to input on this item, please type 'speak' into the chat thread. We will take questions at the end of the report. So, over to you Will.
Thank you very much Chairman, and thank you very much to the committee for inviting us back to talk about the previous year's library performance. Councillor Pepper, you actually perfectly covered what I was about to say in terms of, I will now hand over to Louise. But if there are any questions, I am very grateful to Nicola from Greenwich Leisure Limited joining us today. So I'm sure we'll be able to answer any questions if anyone has. But I will now hand over to Louise.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you Chairman, thank you Will. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to turn my video on at the moment as it does tend to crash the team's call, so please forgive me for that. As already mentioned, I'm going to report on the previous year's performance, so this is obviously from April 19 through to March of this year. And I'm pleased to say that we have continued to have another successful year within the library service, which has seen the majority of the KPIs achieved. We've held over 5,000 events across all of our sites, which was attended by over 68,000 customers. And these included such events as the Bedtime Story Session to celebrate the National Book Start Week, and space events and workshops for the Summer Reading Challenge, which saw a 2% increase on participation from the previous year. And this is a trend that we have continued to see year on year with GLL in partnership for the library service. Throughout the year, we also continue to do some joint working with our district colleagues and in particular the North Cisteven Healthwise team to promote and help connect communities via such activities as sign language sessions and laughing yoga. We've also continued working with East Lindsay District Council and Mabel Thorpe Town Council to hold a Holocaust Memorial event. I'll let Nicola provide any additional details on those activities that are also covered within the report. We've also continued to, in partnerships, working with Public Health and Children's Services within the council, focusing in particular on early years provision and health visitors and making some step forwards in those areas. The main focus of Year Four however was the IT transition from LCC through to GLO, and I'll cover that shortly. In terms of the KPIs on the whole, you can see within the report that it has been a positive year with eight out of the 10 KPIs that we're able to report on being achieved. Visits were unfortunately down against the target. But the suspension of activities and the subsequent closure of sites in March due to coronavirus has had a detrimental impact on this. If we compare the figures however to the previous year, so 18, 19 against the 19, 20, there's actually only a 5% decrease from the number of visits that are actually attending the sites. So whilst the decline in the trend remains, as it does nationally, it's not as significant as the report would indicate. And this is because the 24% decrease within the report is against the target which was established at the start of this contract back in 2016. So actual customers coming through our sites hasn't reduced as much as the target and actual would potentially suggest. Equally, hours of computer use was also down against the target. And as in previous years, limitations with our own IT provision and again the impact of COVID on the final month are the main contributing factors to this. However, we have had significant developments with the transfer of the IT over to GLO and immediate improvements have been noted by many of our customers. We've had a lot of positive feedback and believe that this will continue once we are able to reopen sites fully and be in our full recovery mode post pandemic. It's worth noting on that, since December 2019, we've installed all the new public network computers and printers across all of our core sites and all of our community hubs with the exception of two. The final hub will be going live with their new public network computers and printers in the next few weeks once travel is able to recommence from our GLL colleagues. And the final hub is actually delayed due to a fire at their premises. But we have got plans in place to be able to install the IT once we are able to at the hub's request. The next stage of the IT transfer is the transfer to the new library management system. So this is the new library catalogue that we use across the library service. And this is due to be installed within the next few weeks alongside the refresh of the actual staff and back of house equipment of the core sites. Training on the new library management system has already taken place throughout lockdown and it commenced last week with our CSC advisers. Volunteers at our community hubs will be receiving the training in advance of their reopening throughout the next couple of months. In terms of the community hubs in general over Year Four, they did continue to thrive, offering a service to our customers across the whole county. And looking forward to this year, Year Five of the library contract. Our main focuses will be on the recovering from COVID-19 and included in that will be responding to those changing needs of our customers and also our businesses and our partnerships that we are working with. And also will be that final element of the IT transfer, as I mentioned, that should be completed over the coming weeks. Thank you Chair. Nicola, would you like to add anything in particular around the events that we covered in last year of the contract for scrutiny members please?
Good morning all. I don't think there's a huge amount to add, other than events certainly have thrived in the last year. Obviously lockdown did put a stop to all of that. But we have been able to move a lot of our events online as part of our Facebook and Twitter offer, so we are seeing them still continue. In terms of last year, the Summer Reading Challenge particularly went very, very well, as detailed in the report. Stamford Library were lucky enough to get Colin Furs, an author, visit with his motorised armchair and demonstrating many experiments that the children loved. A lot of the national events that we take part in do go well. National Libraries Week particularly allowed us to particularly focus on things like coding and robotics with a lot of the equipment that we'd been able to purchase through the Forging Link scheme, which was an ACE funded scheme a couple of years previous. As Louise said, we continue to work with East Lindsay District Council and Mabel Thorpe Town Council for the Holocaust Memorial Service. And this year was particularly poignant and linked to the theme of Stand Together, highlighting things like Corrie Temboom. The staff did an excellent, excellent display with actually a demonstration of how the space within the house where Jews were hidden. It was really very moving and got an awful lot of very positive and thoughtful feedback from those attending the service and from those just going to the library alike.
Okay, thank you for those presentations. I'd just now like to invite members of the committee to comment on this report, so in doing so, type 'chat', sorry, type 'speak' in the chat bar. No one wishing to comment so far. You must be doing a really good job. Councillor Lindsay Corey wishes to speak, so over to you Lindsay.
Thank you. Sorry, my IT here is... Brifbury Chief, I can see the cathedral from here, but IT connection's still really bad. I was waiting to see if anyone else wanted to speak first, but if you're happy for me to carry on, I will, we're working on it.
Okay, I'm not sure what order they came in. I see Councillor Clark has got his hand up. You carry on then Councillor.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to our officers and our partners from GLL. Especially the work they're doing with partners and we heard about NKDC with Healthwise and with East Lindsay. And it can't be easy working during the current pandemic and seeing that we're actually on target for eight out of 10 of our KPIs is fantastic. And I think we can forgive attendance figures being down 24% on target, but in real terms, only 5% year on year. I think that's a great testament to innovations, improvements, especially your IT improvements and hard work. And I look forward to seeing further improvements, the results of further improvements being rolled out. Especially the library management system. I know from parish council meeting that I'm attending, that people in the villages I represent are really keen to stop visiting the libraries again. They know why they're locked down, but they're really keen because of the improvements that they've seen, that they want to get back as soon as possible. So thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you for that. Next we've got Councillor Clark, followed by Councillor Linda Wooton, so over to you Councillor Clark.
Thank you Chairman, it seems my chat thing is working on here. I want to ask Louise the question that I raised before. And that is on the Booton Community Hub. The sign doesn't indicate really it's a library. Now, this is causing a bit of confusion with people that are even, you know, saying to me they thought the library was closed and it was in another use now. So I haven't got a chance to actually look at the sign yet. Thank you.
Thank you Councillor Clark. We did go and look at it and within the sign itself, the main text does say that it's the hub. But underneath there is a subheading which does mention the library use. So when community hubs were first established back in 2016, it was the premise that these could be more than just a library and indeed a hub for that local community within which a library was the main focus. And so what we're wanting to do is make sure as much as the library is sustainable, that there are other elements, other activities, other partnerships that can operate from those sites, to really make that hub model work for the communities and for the residents of that area. Which is why we turned to them as community hubs rather than community libraries to make sure we'd got that wider focus there as well. What I can do is, we can revisit it again if it is causing confusion for those residents within that area and I can take that as an action to look forwards over the coming months and contact you directly, Councillor Clark, and discuss further if that would be useful and appropriate.
Yeah, that'll be fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So over to Councillor Linda Wooton.
Thank you Chairman. Once again, I think this is a really pleasing report and I think GLL are doing an excellent job. And I think some of the activities that they've created over the time have been brilliant. And I know for a fact that when my children were small, the library was the go-to place. And if we could transport ourselves back to those times, I know there'd be even more activities for them and they would be entertained. And that's really important. But I'd also like to ask a question about Grantham Museum. I know it's still run by ourselves, LCC opposed to GLL. I saw some activity going on the other day and I'm assuming that it's going to be opening to the public soon. Could you just tell me what practical things that they're going to have to do at the library? Like for instance, will there have to be antiseptic gels? Will there be just so many people allowed in at a time? And that sort of, if you could please. Thank you Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to take that one. So as we've started to look at the reopening of our core sites initially, including the Grantham site, the offer that we've currently got available to our customers is a pre-reservation service. So customers can come into the foyer and the reception areas of our libraries and return those items and those books that they've had out on loan since pre-lockdown, so from back in March of this year. And it also means that they can reserve items in advance, either through the customer service centre and calling up or doing it online through the current library management system that we have available. And then we are scheduling when customers can come and collect their bundle of stock and items that they've already reserved to make sure that they've got their new items to be able to last them through the next couple of weeks. And what our next stage of reopening and recovery is going to be is moving that forwards, is allowing customers to come into the sites to continue browsing. However, as you say, that will be on a limited number basis. There will also be a one-way system around many of the sites where space allows. There'll be quarantine trolleys out available, so if customers are picking up books, but they're not actually issuing and borrowing them themselves, they can go on to the quarantine trolleys to make sure that they're held back for 72 hours before they're then reissued back onto the shelves for other customers to potentially then borrow. As you mentioned, we have got all the additional measures in there, including hand gels and sanitisation, the antibacterial wipes. We've got screens up at our inquiry desk so that when customers are coming into site, we've got those additional measures that are also in place. Sorry, one thing that I didn't mention that we've currently got available is customers being able to also pre-book to come in to use the public PCs and that's on a 30-minute basis, just so that we can make sure we can get additional customers coming through. Again, measures have been taken there in terms of a gap between users at each station so that we can clean those areas down and wipe them down. And again, it's already pre-booked and pre-reserved so that we've not got an influx of individuals queuing, waiting to come into the library to use that function.
Thank you for that Chairman. Just one other thing. Will the libraries be classed as a shop and will people have to wear a mask? Thank you. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is something that we have raised through our libraries connected through to the DCMS for clarification on whether we are classed as a shop or not. At the minute, we don't believe that it is mandatory within the sites. However, we are looking already at the additional signage, asking customers if they would be comfortable wearing a mask. And I think that's something that we're looking at for that next phase, once the libraries are reopened and we've got more individuals coming through. We are pushing for a clearer guidance and steer on that.
Thank you very much Louise. Thank you Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. I've got Councillor Worth, Executive Councillor, wishes to speak, followed by Councillor Aaron. So, Councillor Worth.
Thank you Chairman. I'd just like to really thank the library staff and Greenwich Leisure for the outstanding work they have done during this COVID emergency. Particularly work with the elderly and the vulnerable. And some really innovative ideas for getting young people involved as well. And bringing all the kind of ebooks and all that on as well. So just big thank you to them, they've done some outstanding work and that should be recognised. A really minor point actually Chairman, if you're borrowing ebooks, my understanding is that you have about seven days to read them before they disappear back into the ether. Which can be a lot of frustrating when you're working and you're three quarters way through a book. I know you can't get them back again, but if there's any opportunity to extend the length of that slightly, it would be a benefit, I'm sure.
Okay, that's very interesting Councillor Worth, thank you for that. Nicola, are you able to reply to that? I see you wishing to speak.
Yes, thank you. Just to say with the ebooks, you have a choice of either seven days, I think it's I think it's 15 days or 21 days, when you borrow it. If you just scroll down slightly on the screen, you'll be able to see that you can choose how long you want to borrow it for. I think it is set to sort of default to seven days, but you can choose to have it for longer. Likewise, when you renew, you can also choose how long you want to renew for.
Thank you, chairman. Now I've learnt something. I will pass the message on.
Okay, thank you. Interesting one that. Councillor Aaron.
Thank you, chairman. It was around the special events being held at the libraries. And I wondered whether it would be an idea whether the local member was invited to them because they sound very interesting and I think that would be beneficial if that could happen.
Thank you. Thank you councillor. And I was going to ask a similar question as to how are they advertised? Are they just advertised with the local library or are they advertised wider? Because some of those are quite interesting. I think there's a pajama rama and the Colin Furs one and various things. I just wondered how widely those advertised, if someone could answer that. And councillor Aaron's question, please.
Well, if I pop in here, obviously at the minute we haven't got physical events in the libraries because of the Covid situation. We're hopeful towards the end of the year that they'll be able to come back in. Generally though, looking at our events, we tend to advertise sort of in libraries. We have got a captive audience, so to speak, coming in. But it will be posters and flyers out in the local community. We'll send out press releases. If we think particular sort of local organisations might be interested, we will contact them. Also on our social media, the @linkslibraries Facebook and Twitter pages, it will be advertised through there. And essentially wherever we can find somebody who's willing to sort of advocate and promote us. And obviously in the future, when we do get back to something regarding normal and have the events going on in the libraries, I'd be more than happy to invite local members to come along.
I think that would be a good thing if you could. I mean councillors are involved in their communities and it'd be a good way of spreading the word if you could let local members know in future.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lawton.
Thank you very much, chairman. Just also to say congratulations on the excellent work. And it will be wonderful. We'll know we've got back to some sort of normality when we can just drop into our local library and browse. That will be wonderful. One of the hallmarks of getting back to as good as normal as we can hope. And I hope that doesn't take, is not too far off for us. It's also good news that contrary to previous views, that the printed book is making a comeback. And I hope that the library service will benefit from this realisation that there is nothing like a printed book in spite of all the eBooks and everything else. There is nothing like a book and long may it return and the library service succeed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Lawton for that. Are we any others wishing to speak? Can't see any. Just going back to Bourne Library, that seems to be one of the anomalies, if I may say so, where the staff remain employed by Southcysteven District Council. Is that a long-term thing? Is that likely to change in the future? Could somebody answer that, please?
I'll take that one, thank you. So councillor Worth, did you want that response? No. It is a longstanding arrangement that we've had within the library service that predated the transfer to Greenwich Leisure Limited. So we do have a service level agreement with Southcysteven District Council for them to be able to manage that site within their building and with their employees. And that is something that is a longstanding arrangement from when we moved the site historically many, many years ago. So at the minute, there are no plans to make amendments on that building and transfer that to GLL, unlike with the Grantham where we are still actively exploring options and alternative premises where we would then be able to transition those staff over to Greenwich.
Okay, thank you. Can't see any other speakers there. I'll just leave it a few seconds. Okay, I think that brings us to a conclusion. So thank you for that. So the actions are that this committee is required to review and review the performance information in the report and consider the proposed year five developments highlighted and recommend any additional priorities for consideration. If we feel we've done that, I'll make the proposal. I'll move that we note the performance information included in the report and endorse the year five developments. May I have a second of that? I've proposed it. Could someone second that, please?
I'll second it, Mr Chairman. Councillor Oxbey.
Thank you councillor Oxbey. We'll now vote on this item. Emily will read out the name of each member present alphabetically and you are asked to state for, against or abstain. So over to you, Emily.
Thank you, chairman. Councillor Aaron.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Cook.
For.
Councillor Lawton.
For.
Councillor Oxbey.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Lynda Wotton.
For.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
For.
Thank you, chairman. That's carried.
Okay, I mean it clearly carried. So thank you all for that. We'll move on now to item six, which is the Blue Light Collaboration Programme progress report. This item gives the committee the opportunity to review the progress on the Blue Light Collaboration Programme and the collaborative working across the three emergency services in Lincolnshire. The item will be presented by Tim Joyce, area manager for Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue. Again, just a reminder, if you would like to input on this item, please type speak into the chat thread. So over to you, Tim.
Just unmuted there. Thank you, chair, and good morning, everybody. So clearly this won't be the first time a number of people have seen update reports on the Blue Light Collaboration Programme, but nevertheless, I will just run through as a little bit of a reminder for everybody who can't necessarily go back all the way to 2015, which seems like some time ago. So the programme consists of five separate projects. The first three main projects were the funded initiatives and then two further projects which were always to be self-funding. So the first three projects were the shared fire and police headquarters building on South, oh sorry, to Nettleham. So the reason that project was important and the first one was to enable some of the further projects that we'll speak about. That project has been completed, was completed some time ago and fire and rescue now occupy part of the building at Nettleham. The second project, which was the shared fire and police control room, did undergo some difficulties during the period of transition, mainly because of the mobilising system that is used in our control room. The reason those delays happened within that project were mainly to ensure that we didn't expose ourselves to any additional cost for very little benefit. And again, I'm happy to take any questions on that later on. But again, that was an enabling project to bring our control room function into a shared building at Nettleham to enable the grounds at South Park to be cleared for. The third and really flagship project, which was the shared fire, police and ambulance operational station at South Park, which no doubt everybody will have seen. That is now complete, other than some small areas of snagging which are being dealt with on a daily basis. But operationally, everybody was now within that building and it is working very successfully. The second, oh sorry, the fourth and fifth project, fourth one was the wider estates review project. And that was set up to look at the estates of all three emergency services across the whole of Lincolnshire to see whether there were opportunities for us to rationalise those estates and save money across the piece. And it wasn't necessarily aimed at any one service saving money. The idea was to look at it in the round and decide amongst three services whether there were significant savings to be made. And there have been a number of initiatives that have already been undertaken there. Laff is a shared fire and ambulance station, as is the new build at Sleaford. Grantham has the underwater search team from police housed there, which enabled fire and rescue stores to move up to Nettleham. And there are a number of smaller initiatives around dropping sites for police staff around the county. And finally, the wider integration and interoperability project, which was really envisaged initially as being the catch-all and the opportunity to ensure that no ideas were lost during this process from any one of the services and that we could capture those and work through any wider initiatives to bring the collaboration piece together. That's a bit of a whistle-stop around the five projects which made the Blue Light Collaboration Programme. In terms of the budget and the finances, there's, again, it's been testing, I'd say, during the whole programme. Executive have had to deal with a couple of difficult issues during that period. And it's been pleasing to see that the support's been there under scrutiny throughout the whole programme. Overall, in terms of the budget, at the moment, it's looking like we have a small underspend, circa £90,000 at the moment. Suggesting a project or a programme of this size, that there will be some small sundries to come out which will reduce that figure, but I'm pleased to see that it's been brought in within the budget envelope. Some of the things that are highlighted in this report recognise the challenges that have been undertaken during the life of the project. Those of you who have been involved from the start will remember that a significant amount of money was provided through the Police Innovation Fund, which there were very strict deadlines in terms of the financial year that we needed to spend that money. That then led to some pressure to sign a contract with the main contractors at a stage where I think it's fair to say property would have preferred to have had a little bit more of a window to finish the final negotiations. So that was, I think, probably on reflection, the most difficult and challenging part of the programme in its entirety. Having said that, the county council of property worked extremely hard with legal colleagues at that time to come up with some innovative solutions to deal with some of the issues at the time. And I think looking back, again, the scrutiny that they applied at that point was a benefit to the project overall. In terms of governance, the programme was worked under an envelope of a Blue Light Collaboration Agreement, which was signed by all three parties. And that provided the agreed structure for the governance of the whole programme going forward. Now we've got to the point that the three main funded projects have been completed. The way forward, as suggested in the paper now, is that the governance will be slimmed down significantly and leaving the steering group in place and a new collaboration delivery board, of which I'm chair this year, will have a rotating chair each year. That will basically look at some of the wider initiatives continuing from all three services as things change. At the moment, Covid on a daily basis and opportunities throughout the year and really that group is just to make sure that we don't lose track of any of those opportunities as we go forward. There is an appendix attached to the report and I would just like to, I guess, bring your attention to a couple of the variances within the appendix. Really, the ones around Blue Light Campus and the environments between other projects and that main budget, which is an area that you just need to be aware of because that brings the whole budget for the programme under by £90,000. In terms of the actual South Park build, that would have led to it being over budget if we weren't able to make the savings in the other areas. So that's just a key point to note. I think that concludes the brief updates of the programme so far and I'm obviously happy to take any questions.
Okay, Tim. Thank you for the presentation. I'd now like to invite members of the committee to comment on this report. So again, type speak into the chat bar. I see that councillor Lynda Wotton has already done so. So over to you councillor Wotton.
Thank you, chairman. Once again, this is a really interesting report and I've just got a couple of questions. Did we have a blueprint to work towards or was Lincolnshire one of the first areas to try out this tri-service project? And also I've got a question. Could you explain to me what, if I can find it, what is the East Coast and Hertfordshire Consortium mobilising system collaboration? It will obviously be quite easy for the fire officer, but if you could just explain to me what it was. And also, could you tell me if West Park Police Station is completely closed down now? Because that was one of my favourite programmes on TV to watch our local police force in action. And I know they had an awful lot of cells there. And do we have an awful lot of cells out on South Park? And that's my questions. Thank you, chairman.
Okay, Lynda. A range of questions there. So over to you, Tim, for that.
Yes, thank you councillor Wotton for those questions. In terms of the first question, the blueprint, that's a very good question. No, there wasn't a blueprint for us to follow, especially in terms of the South Park building. That is and remains a flagship across the country for a number of reasons. It was designed from scratch for the operational purposes of three completely different Blue Light services. This one specifically to include a home office standard custody suite for Lincolnshire Police, which had never been done before with other Blue Light services in the building. I was fortunate to join the programme at a stage just after the business cases had been agreed. And it's fair to say, looking back, as we have, and we've carried out a fairly thorough review so far of that project, looking back to the initial design phase, the building we've got now bears very little resemblance to the suggestions that were made by the main contractor then. For that very reason, there was no blueprint and we had to design the building trying to deal with the needs of each service as we went along. And it's fair to say some of that design work was even not completed until after contract signature, which is, I guess, led to the difficulties that I mentioned earlier on. So we should be rightly proud as a county to be able to hold that building up as a beacon for the rest of the country, certainly as a success. And for anybody who's had the opportunity to visit the building or walk around it, they'll recognise that it's a very, very interesting building. The reason it's interesting is because it's been designed for the flow of each organisation. As an example, for our on-call colleagues, as you drive past on South Park, you'll notice there's a small car park outside the front of the building. The on-call colleagues can park straight outside the front of the building and they go in what looks like a fire escape in front of the building, but it isn't. It goes straight through into the muster area where their fire- looks like a fire escape in front of the building, but it isn't. It goes straight through into the muster area where their fire kit is. And then from there, it's another twenty feet through to the printouts and all the operational information that they need prior to walking straight through into the appliance room and turning out. It could not be designed in a better way to achieve the flow of work for firefighters and ambulance service. The police side of the building, again, is a really, really large and purpose-built area, and there's significant amount of hidden design work within the building, not least things like firearms stores and the custody suite is literally state to the art. So no, there wasn't a blueprint, and I think, on reflection, I think it's a really, really well-designed building, and the county should be proud of it. And second question, the East Coast Consortium. So that is a consortium of control rooms that we brought together. There was a funding bid made to pay for this consortium. But that really, it was a difficulty for us because I'm going to try and describe this without using any acronyms or technical bits that will be confusing, but in a nutshell, there was a piece of equipment that we could have purchased to move to Nettleham. It's called an integrated command and control system, but it was a piece of computer hardware. We could have bought that and moved to Nettleham on time. However, it was redundant at that point, so it would have meant us wasting around about a hundred thousand pounds for that period. And we didn't consider that to be value for money. The consortium is between Humber Side, Norfolk, Hertfordshire and Lincolnshire. And what the idea of that programme is, is to link all those four control rooms through one integrated mobilising system, which enables any one of those services to take calls for the other services, so provides a significant additional level of resilience to the service. Hopefully, that answers that question. And then finally, the West Parade building. Certainly, all the functions from police have moved from West Parade. And I know it's a difficult job to decommission a building of that size and complexity, but as I understand it, that work might still be ongoing. I don't think it's been sold, but as I understand, it's empty.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Tim, thank you for that. So in essence, then, the remote one being Hertfordshire. I guess that's in case if some major disaster happened here on the East Coast, the Hertfordshire Control Room would be able to take over and run it as it was.
Yeah, that's correct, councillor, and there were a number of other benefits. If, for example, during spate conditions, if we have a significant level of rainfall in Lincolnshire and the number of calls spikes, it means that the other services can absorb some of those calls, take the details, and then either, in some cases, they can mobilise assets within our service. But in other cases, they can take the details and then hold that information and pass it through to Lincolnshire at a time where we're able to deal with the calls again.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Tim, for your excellent report. Yeah, I'd just like to tell the committee I had the privilege a month ago of having a tour of the South Park Station with, led by Ian Reid. And just wanted to say that obviously, of course, it's a tri-service station with the police, ambulance and fire and rescue. I don't think I completely grasped how many other organisations were working, organisations and charities working in the emergency planning there, including county council departments. It was a real eye-opener to see how many people were working out of there, especially with, obviously, Covid. In one room, it was a big room with numerous workstations, and I'll never forget, there was a huge TV screen at the end of the room, and it was showing the news in real time so that everyone could respond to events, you know, in real time. And even there was like a joint press room, so that all the information to the public was coordinated by each of the services. And Ian Reid, who went upstairs, and Ian Reid mentioned that there are meeting rooms there that might, in the future, be that could be used as meeting rooms possibly for this committee even. And I just wanted to say, Chairman, that I think it would be fabulous if we could take him up on his kind of, because it would be great for other members to see just how special South Park is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Cook. Presumably, he was relating more there to the Emergency Response Centre as opposed to the Blue Light Centre.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes.
Just for clarity there. Okay, so thank you for that, councillor Cook. We've got Chief Officer Les Brittsman wishing to speak, so over to you, Les.
It was just a quick comment. Thank you, Chair, in response to councillor Cook. Yeah, thank you for the comments. Yes, Ian and his team have been doing a sterling job. Actually, it's not just during Covid, but probably just for the last twelve months since Waynefeet last year. I don't think they've really stopped, and during that time, they've also had the refurb ongoing as well. But yes, the LRF response to Covid has been countywide, including volunteers, county council, district council and special as well. So thank you for that comment. I'll pass those on to Ian Reid and his team.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Okay, thank you, Les. Tim, back over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just councillor Cook hits on a fairly important point, though. And that is the movement of the control room from the building that they occupied, which was above the County Emergency Centre. The movement of that function to Nettleham has then allowed the emergency planning team to move into the refurbished area in the top of the County Emergency Centre, which, again, was another important enabler. Again, I'll just reflect on the fact that initially, when we were looking at the redesign, the Blue Light Campus in its entirety, emergency planning was initially within the scope of the main building. And that's another really good example of the changing design and a recognition that as a service and as a county council, we wanted to get best value from the budget that we were using. Therefore, the County Emergency Centre, as it is now, turned out to be better served being refurbished rather than demolished and a new building put up. So again, I think that's a really, really good indication of the way that the project and the programme has transformed over time.
Okay, thank you, Tim. The police building on West Parade, councillor Lynda Wharton touched upon it, but presumably that will be sold and the proceeds from the sale of that, does that go back to the police? Or is that all thrown in the melting pot for the collaboration project?
No, that is, that is the police is to dispose of.
Okay. And someone touched upon the control now at Nettleham. Do they still work? I mean, the two controls, police and fire, are both in the same building, but presumably they still work somewhat independent of each other. Almost as if there's a different building, I guess, but I guess there's got to be some sort of integration there. And clearly, police control won't be turning out to fire appliances, but can you just tell me what, how they interact with each other and the advantage of being in the same building is, please?
Certainly, can share. So yes, they are in the same building, they are in the same room. One of the difficulties they've found with working directly in the same room with the police is that they, because they, both services mobilised in a completely different way, they have a completely different method of of taking calls and turning out. And the police side can get a little noisier than maybe fire are used to, whereas the fireside is a little bit more sedate. The reason for that is because on the police side, they mobilise in a much more dynamic way, whereas the reason that our control function is so efficient and the reason we've only got a smaller number of control operators is because we put so much work into pre-planning and pre-populating a number of things within the mobilising system. So as an example of that, if we get a call for a fire at the cathedral, already in the mobilising system, there will be what's called a predetermined attendance, which will define which appliances, skills and the number of firefighters they're required to deal with higher in the cathedral, in line with the plans that we've already put in place. But also the number of officers, and it will look at where those particular assets are in live terms and decide which ones are closest in relation to their travel times to the building. So they are completely different models, and hence, there is, it's a very difficult environment sometimes to work in when the two models are working side by side. However, they have put a couple of additional measures in to reduce that conflict. So they've got some screens that are going in, just some partial screens, which just reduces the noise a little bit. In terms of the benefits, really, the key benefit is, and I guess the hope is that we never need to see the benefit to realise. In the event where there is either a fast-moving terrorist incident or a significant catastrophic emergency, prior to them moving into the same building, the way, the method of communication was via the airwave system. And we would have to ask the police service to open a channel, at which point the commanders all then have to go on to that channel and make contact and pass information. Obviously, if you've got two supervisors working back to back in the control room, whichever emergency service that call comes through to, the other one is going to have immediate awareness of that incident. And rather than trying to gather situational awareness over a radio, it means that they can see and hear events unfolding from the other emergency service. That, for me, is the biggest benefit of collaboration in the control room function.
Okay, thank you. Can't see any other speakers there. Presumably, Tim, council tax is paid on that building, yeah? At South Park, the new Blue Light Building?
South Park, sorry.
Yeah, is that split up between the three services? Who pays the council tax?
It's split within the lease, so because it's a Lincolnshire County Council-owned building, county council would pay the rates and council tax, but then would make an amendment to the lease costs.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the wider integration and interoperability, you've mentioned there's currently nineteen opportunities still to be progressed of varying levels of progress will be seen over the next twelve months. Can you give us a hint of what they might be?
So there's a few opportunities that we've been looking at for a while. So things like a joint cadet, joint cadet service. I talked earlier on about the, looking at the synergies between some of the operational teams that exist within the various services. So as an example of that, the police have the underwater search team. And we obviously have a significant number of our boat teams and swift water rescue teams. So an example of something we might look at there would be, is it, can fire provide the boats and police just provide the divers? To save both services having to provide the same assets. Another area is that the police have a fairly new rope team that they've initiated to assist with the removal of protesters from unusual environments. And for us, obviously, again, we've got station line rescue, we've also got the specialist line rescue teams, which have a much, much wider capability than the police teams. So another example of an initiative we're looking at is if, we obviously won't get involved in removing protesters. However, our teams can provide the stable rope environments and to make sure that the anchors are widened for the police teams to work off, if that makes sense. So what we do is provide the safety, and then the police are able to do a little bit more with the capability that they've got. So it's those kinds of initiatives that we're going to be looking at.
Okay, thank you. Can't see any other speakers. Just, that's just last one from me, Tim. I don't think it's an unfair question. I like to think it's not, but hindsight's such a wonderful thing. And having seen the building in operation now for a few months, is there anything about it you would have done differently?
That's a very good question. Not with the finances we had. I think from a fire and rescue perspective, the only thing that I would have probably done would have been to have a tri-service training building rather than the fire training building. Even though it can be used by all services, it's still currently our asset, and I think it was it was built quite a while ago and probably could have done with a full new fire training building. So that's the only thing really. In terms of the design of the actual building, it's worked out really well.
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah. Yeah, so all in all, it's a good thing for Lincolnshire and to be lead, like you say, the flagship to be leading the way for others, yeah. So, yeah, win-win all round. Okay, so thank you. I can't see any other speakers there, so our actions on this is to invite the progress within the programme and provide feedback as appropriate. If we feel we've done that, I'll move that we receive the report. And can I have a second of that, please?
Seconded, Chairman.
Is that councillor Cook, is that?
Oh, sorry, that's me. Yes, thank you, Chairman. I seconded.
Sure, okay, thank you councillor Cook. So the move been seconded, so over to you, Emily.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Aaron.
Please start with your for against.
Councillor Clark.
Four.
Councillor Cook.
Four.
Councillor Lawton.
Four.
Councillor Oxby.
Four.
Councillor Papper.
Four.
Councillor Lynda Wharton.
Four.
Councillor Ray Wharton.
Four.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, thank you all for that. Item seven of the agenda is the Public Protection and Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme for the coming year to ensure that scrutiny activity is focused where it can be of greatest benefit. Over to you, Daniel, for this item.
Thank you, Chairman. The work programme is included in the pack, shown on page twenty-eight. The next meeting of the committee is due on the fifteenth of September. And we've got four items currently programmed for that meeting. The Lincolnshire Registration, Celebratory Service Annual Report, Animal Health and Welfare Review, an update on the Heritage Service, and also some additional information on adult reoffending performance. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. If members wish to speak, please type speak in the chat thread. No, so none forth comments. So the committee is invited to review, consider and comment on the work programme as set out in this report and highlight the discussion, any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration of the work programme. No one wishes to speak, I'm happy with that, so I'll move that it's approved. If anyone disagrees with that, please type in the chat bar, otherwise we'll take it that it's all agreed. Okay, we'll take it that on's agreed. Thank you all for that. We now have closed this part of the meeting, and we now sit as the Crime and Disorder Scrutiny Committee. For the following item, the For the following item, the committee will be sitting as the County Council's Crime and Disorder Committee. Which we're required to do at least once a year. This item gives the committee the opportunity to review the work that has been undertaken in relation to domestic abuse within Lincolnshire. The item will be presented by Jade Sullivan, who is the Community Safety Strategy Coordinator and Domestic Abuse Lead. Again, just a reminder, if you wish to speak, please type speak in the chat bar. So Jade, over to you.
Well, just to apologise as well that my camera, unfortunately, if I do put it on, it crashes the system at the moment, so sorry about that, but I I am here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in terms of the report, obviously you've all seen that and have that in front of you. And it's to give you, as councillor Pepper said, to give you an update with regards to domestic abuse. All all elements of domestic abuse within Lincolnshire and also especially, I suppose, in in light of Covid nineteen and how we've managed. Domestic abuse within this period of time, very difficult period of time. And from from the report, you'll see there are some statistics in there from the crime survey for England and Wales. Uh that that really focuses on the period between April thirteen and March sixteen in terms of a local level. Estimated that seven percent of our resident population of Lincolnshire aged sixteen to fifty-nine years experienced at least one. Domestic abuse incident, and that's approximately twenty-seven thousand four hundred people. Uh this is above the national average of six point two and places Lincolnshire thirteenth out of forty-two police force areas. In terms of domestic abuse prevalence. And this is the latest figure reported at a local level, however nationally is estimated that six point three percent of adults. Actually between the age of sixteen and fifty-nine will have experienced domestic abuse in the last year ending March twenty nineteen. And that national figure would equate roughly to twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty. And adults aged sixteen to fifty-nine suffering domestic abuse in Lincolnshire. And that's obviously assuming that it's a similar prevalence in Lincolnshire compared to the the England and Wales average. And it's it's quite difficult to get Lincolnshire level, local Lincolnshire data at that level. And and because a lot of it is collected and reported at a national level and therefore it's it's difficult to get that kind of regional comparison. And where we do have it, though, I've obviously included that, some of that in in the report, where we have Lincolnshire level. And data. And there there is also a lot more data, obviously, other than that's in this report on our JSNA. Our Joint Strategic Needs Assessment available on on the website. And so there's a lot of information in there if you do want to look at further data. In terms of our data for MARAC, though, which is our multi-agency risk assessment conference. And we do have regional comparison data with with that. And that is available on our Safe Lives National Charity website. And in the report, you'll you'll see that last year, so from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. We had nine hundred and ninety-seven victims were referred to our high-risk conference around domestic abuse. Which does represent a twenty-three percent increase from the previous year. However, looking at last year's and looking at the comparison regionally, that is available, like I said, on the Safe Lives website. And we are actually below the average in terms of the rest of our counties within these middle. And in terms of the number of cases of of high level. It's fairly consistent as well over the last few years with some some slight increases, but not anything too significant. They were obviously majorly concerned about. And and you'll see from the report as well that since April twenty eleven, there's been seventeen. Cases in terms of domestic homicide reviews that have met the criteria for domestic homicide review. And that has involved twenty-five deaths within that. And over the last four months during Covid nineteen, we were expecting to see an increase in referral rates. Through to our MARAC service and also through to our outreach domestic abuse services within Lincolnshire, which is called Eden Links. However, that has remained quite stable throughout that period. We've seen some weak fluctuations, but that's actually quite normal and again, we've not been concerned about that. The one thing we have seen an increase in is our general inquiries through to our domestic abuse services, through our telephone calls, emails and through the website. But again, that hasn't actually translated into referral levels at this point. But we are monitoring that on a two-weekly basis, a fortnightly basis. I'm getting a number of performance data sent to me, which is being analysed. And then we're working with our providers to make sure that if capacity is needed, if support is needed around capacity. Then we're giving them that to those providers. Uh in terms of our refuges in Lincolnshire, we're also seeing that that has remained at normal capacity over the last five months. In terms of Covid nineteen. And within the report, I've given you a summary of the number of. Uh areas around domestic abuse that we've been managing during the last period of time. And obviously, this has this has been managed throughout the year, but I wanted to focus mainly on on the Covid nineteen. And and just to assure everybody that that has continued and our services have continued. And a number of things have been introduced to make sure we're monitoring that. As I said earlier, we've been collecting data actually on a weekly basis up until. A few weeks ago, up until a month ago, and then we've changed that to fortnightly to really make sure that we're monitoring everything within Lincolnshire. And our MARAC, our Multi-Agency Risk Assessment Conference, has continued to operate on a weekly basis. And we've done that mainly via telephone conferencing and using MS Teams, and that's worked really, really well. And we've had partners that have been absolutely fantastic in obviously adjusting to all of that. And and, you know, thanks to everybody really that's been involved, that's been really, really brilliant. And our Eden Services, which operates and we commission as a county council to run our outreach service for domestic abuse victims and children. And also our each of service, our independent domestic violence advisors, and they work with our high-risk victims of domestic abuse. That that has been, has continued to operate as it normally would, doing a lot of work via telephone, via video consultation. Using technology in the best way they possibly can to keep that contact with people. And and through our recovery planning that we're now focusing on, we are looking at and have started doing some face-to-face social distancing. In contact with people that want to have that, particularly people with learning difficulties. And also people that have mental health issues or wellbeing issues that really wanted that face-to-face contact. So we're we're now doing that and working more and more towards that being more common again. And again, our refuges have continued to operate throughout this period of time. And the national system of refer and referral process has worked really, really well. We haven't come up with any issues at that at this point. And we have obviously been operating social distancing within our refuges when there's been communal areas. And they've included Covid nineteen-related questions within the triage process. To make sure that they're obviously safeguarding staff and residents within refuges. And domestic homicide reviews have continued in line with the Home Office guidance. There was an initial guidance to say if it was going to be quite resource-intensive, continue with a domestic homicide review, was to halt that. Temporarily, particularly obviously if it was going to be difficult for health colleagues to be involved. So we did have one that we had to halt for a couple of months, but that has now been started again. But every other domestic homicide review that was that was ongoing in Lincolnshire continued to be ongoing in that process. And actually Covid didn't stop any of that happening. We've had a number of communications elements happening while Covid nineteen has been going on. A number of packages have been pulled together nationally that we've then been communicating out to all our partners. Locally, we've pulled together some packages for our partners, mainly focusing on our local services. Making sure that people are aware that they're sort of available for people to use. And also that, obviously, the the national guidance was around being able to flee a home. Even though, obviously, all the national guidance around Covid nineteen was saying stay at home, don't socially isolate, don't go out. Obviously, it was very different if you were fleeing domestic abuse. We've tried to make that really clear in our communications. You'll also see from the report that there was a national campaign led by Hestia with all Boots stores, where they're offering a safe space for victims of domestic abuse. Again, we were communicating that and making sure that that people are aware. And there's been some absolutely fantastic work done with the Co-op locally and also Sainsbury's. They had agreed to play posters and leaflets in all of their stores and pharmacies in Lincolnshire. And that's been, you know, hard work by the team, working with those people, making sure that happens. And working with the district councils as well, and making sure our waste management teams, which at one point were, you know, people. The only people really going out and going close to homes. And we're making sure the waste management teams were on board, understood what they might be looking for in terms of domestic abuse and knew how to report if they needed to. So a number, a number of communications elements there that have been happening over that period of time. And we do have a regular communications agenda item on our partnership meeting on a on a regular basis anyway. And we have a joint campaigns that we run throughout the year that work really, really well, particularly with the police and other 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 partners. Our training, we do offer multi-agency training around domestic abuse for an awareness-raising level. And we've also just developed and are introducing a more specialised training around coercive and violent behaviour and stalking domestic abuse related. And both of those training, face-to-face trainings that we normally have over a day, are being developed into e-learning packages. A blended kind of package, including some live sessions, some pre-recorded sessions and some slideshows. And so that is being worked on and that will be available going forward from September onwards. And really, really important development in terms of our trainings, that people can still access that. In the meantime, there is other online training that has been available for people, but we feel that it's really important and we don't just leave it at those. Those that we actually continue to develop, obviously, as we don't know how long this is going to be affecting us for. And our Make a Change Community-based Perpetrator Programme. Hopefully, you'll you'll remember that this was actually initially funded by the Police Transformation Fund and it was initially a three-year project. Period and led by the police. And that money ended in March. And and we have been exploring, before Covid nineteen happened, we had set up a pass and finish group, a project group. And we were looking at how to continue that perpetrator programme within Lincolnshire. And it's aimed at people that's not within the criminal justice system, but people that haven't got to that point. It's hopefully an early intervention programme, that is the aim of it, and it's working with people before they enter that that service. And sometimes even before they recognise that behaviour as abuse, but it's about working with them and helping them and supporting them through that. Because the research obviously tells us very much so that you you can't just work with the victim. And to really tackle this this issue of domestic abuse, we need to be working perpetrators as well. So we have temporarily funded the Make a Change programme for three, for sorry, for six months. So till the end of September, to make sure that we have time to look at a local sustainable. Programme for Lincolnshire, because the Make a Change programme was externally funded and it was very much led by Respect, which is national, national organisation. And what has actually happened in the meantime is Respect put in a funding bid to the big lottery. And we've actually been awarded funding alongside another county to continue the Make a Change programme. With slight amendments the next three years. So we actually have a funded programme until twenty twenty-three, March twenty twenty-three. And that that means we can hopefully get through this period of Covid nineteen, put some recovery in place. And also work towards the development of a more localised programme for Lincolnshire over the next three years. So really, really positive outcome as a as a result of the work that's been done there. And just moving to the second part of the report around the next steps and further developments. Over the next six months, the focus really for the partnership is going to be around the recovery planning. And preparing for changes in government guidance around Covid nineteen. And we do have a recovery plan and we are updating that on a regular basis and working on that on a constant basis as well. And we're also at need to proceed with our planned consultation in relation to the domestic abuse bill. And our governance arrangements in Lincolnshire to actually fulfil those requirements in terms of that domestic abuse bill. And as I'm sure most of you will be aware, the government reintroduced the domestic abuse bill into Parliament on the third of March twenty twenty. And it had its second reading in April and it then went into its committee stage, which obviously is now out of its committee stage. It came out on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of June. And really in summary, the bill is to make provision in relation to domestic abuse, to make provision for and in connection with the establishment of a domestic abuse commissioner. To prohibit cross-examining in person in family proceedings in certain circumstances. To make provision about certain violent or sexual offences and offences involving other abusive behaviour committed outside of the UK. And for connected purposes. And there are several elements to the domestic abuse bill and I've included a link to the fact sheets. And there are a number that look at the definition, that look at the commissioner's role, that look at the element around cross-examining. Within the family courts and and so on and so on. So there's a number of fact sheets there that are really broken down and and quite nice to to follow and read through. In terms of the main area that will affect us as a county council and a partnership. Is around the statutory duties underneath the accommodation-based services fact sheet. And that basically gives the four-part statutory framework for delivering support to victims of domestic abuse and their children within safe accommodation. And it's about providing clarity over governance and accountability within that. And when I talk about, well, when that talks about safe accommodation, it's not just talking about refugees, it is talking about the wider accommodation. Dispersed properties, it's talking about target hardening and sanctuary themes and how to support people staying in their own home. So it is that wider picture and it's that support service around people, not just around accommodation. And what that duty is going to going to say to us and what that duty is going to be is that we have to have a local, a multi-agency domestic abuse local partnership board. And which we would be led, which would be led by a tier-one local authorities. And that would have to assess the need of accommodation-based domestic abuse support for all victims in the area. Develop and publish a strategy for the provision of such support. And and look at a needs assessment within that as well. Give effect to that strategy through commissioning or decommissioning or whatever that might might look like. Monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the strategy and then report back to central government. That's one element of that four-part statute duty. The other element will be to require local authorities to have regard to statutory guidance and exercising their functions. So there will be a statute of guidance of deep abuse. And we imagine that that will be available by the end of this year and then be, we will have to then. Our our duty will then be commenced from April next year. The third part is to require the Secretary of State to produce statutory guidance, having consulted with the domestic abuse commissioner. That will come obviously along with with that duty. And then they'll require also tier-two councils, local authorities to cooperate with the lead authority as far as is reasonably practical. And and obviously, there's going to be, and that will be within the partnership, within the needs assessment and within the strategy. And and within other elements of that delivery of that statute duty. So that is one of our main focuses, obviously, over the next six months, is ensuring that we've done a full consultation on that. And that those requirements and then what the governance might need to look like in Lincolnshire to support that. Our other element that we're focused on is the MARAC review that was undertaken last year. There was another number of findings and elements that came from that which we are taking forward. And the main areas in the next six months that we need to focus on really is around developing an escalation process, looking at our repeat cases. And complex cases have been our MARAC arena. And looking at a central repository for dealing with standard to medium risk assessment. At the moment, all agencies do do that, that they keep them and record them separately within their own agency. And what that means is that we're not building up that pattern of abuse over time and identifying those lower-level cases. That obviously are then escalating at certain points. And so we're looking at ways we can do that and we do have some partnership agreement around how to take that forward. And I think that's that's element of the report. In terms of our commissioned services, so we have a commissioned service for Lincolnshire. Called Eden Links and that contract commenced on the first of August twenty eighteen. Meaning there was only one provider, whereas before that there was three. And that has seemed to work really, really well, having a consistent approach and and service across the whole of Lincolnshire. For our victims and children engaged and affected by domestic abuse. So there was an annual review of our Eden Link service in November, December twenty nineteen. And Eden were awarded outstanding in every area of that assessment, so that's really, really positive. And I've included some some data in there around some of the figures that they've seen and some of the referrals that they've seen in in the last year. So in the financial year of twenty nineteen twenty, Eden received a hundred, so one thousand four hundred and forty-five adult referrals. At this present time, they don't receive referrals for children. What happens is they receive an adult referral. What happens is they receive an adult referral and then if there's our children, uh, within that family and there's a need for those children to have support. It's then referred internally then to their, their, um, uh, children and young people, um, workers. So that's how it, how it's, how it's managed within, within that organisation. Um, they, um, in the last quarter of, uh, January to March twenty twenty. Uh, uh, in terms of our recording quarter at this, at this period of time when I did the report, and there was four hundred and eight adult referrals. Um, and that is, and, and we have seen an increase in, in January twenty twenty, represented quite a high monthly figure. But other than that, it has been fairly consistent. Um, and.
Yeah, you don't know where you are in the report when you get into the end, but I'm just thinking there's a lot there for councillors, for members to absorb. I'm just going to just pause there and just see if we've got any questions coming in. I, I note we've got one there from, uh, councillor Ray Wotton, so if you don't mind, I'd like to take Ray's question there, if that's okay with you.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Steve, Mr. Chairman, and it's very interesting. You've answered quite a number of questions which I had, uh, to put you in, in relation to the new bill which is going through Parliament. But, but I did a report a couple of months ago. And what I found was that Refuge had reported a vast increase in num-, not only number of cases that came to them, but. Nearly a thousand percent increase in the use of your, uh, Refuge website and referrals. How is it that Lincolnshire have got a lower figure? Is it the fact that we're better at dealing with the cases and people know they can come straight to us? Or is it that we're, we're missing those people that need help and action?
Yeah, no, it's a really, that's a really interesting question. I think, um, we have heard that nationally as well, and we've heard the same with, um, police, um, incidences. But nationally, they've seen a sub, with the police, they've seen a seven percent increase, for example, in, in domestic abuse incidents being reported over this period of time in terms of COVID-19. Um, but we haven't seen that in Lincolnshire and that hasn't been reflected in Lincolnshire, the same with Refuge. We, what I would say though councillor Wotton, is that our refugees are always at a hundred percent capacity mark. They are, we, but we have a good turnover, you know, obviously that the, in terms of the, the, the criteria and the timings and the support that we give people. Because obviously it's not permanent residence, it's about supporting people at that time when we need to and when they need it most. And obviously the most important thing is then moving them on to, uh, accommodation where they feel independence and they can obviously live. Live a, you know, relatively normal life and, 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 and do that, you know, successfully. So what, what we see in Lincolnshire is that that happens really easily, really quickly, really well. And I don't know whether it's down to the fact that we are, um, our district councils work with us really, really well in terms of moving people on to appropriate accommodation. So our refugees always have that kind of appropriate turnover rate. Um, we do get inquiries obviously through our refugees and if we are full, we then have to work with the national system. Um, and divert them to other refuges if that's appropriate. Or we, as, as I said, we, we are very much supported by our district and, and then, and, and look to them to help us. To, um, uh, uh, find other accommodation and that works really, really well. So it could be down to that, councillor Wotton, that, that, that's why it works very well in Lincolnshire.
Chair, if I could come back on a further question please.
Yes.
All right. Uh, I noticed on, on your report, you're talking about, um, eight percent of, of victims are high risk. In fact, you've got nine hundred ninety-seven victims there. There's been a lot of publicity about the number of women who are now able to flee their homes. But have you any statistics on male victims? Because they're not mentioned in your report at all.
Yeah, yeah, the eight percent includes males and females in terms of high risk. And so we, we haven't kind of broken that down in Lincolnshire. Um, so all of those figures that you see for Lincolnshire include both female and male. Um, I probably could go to the police and ask them if they could break down some of their figures around male and female victims. We could, we could do that. And then we could also do that around our multi-agency risk assessment conference as well, because we do have that, that level of detail if we, if we want to. Um, but that, that, that eight percent is both male and female, includes both. Obviously, it is predominant, it is predominantly female, um, a- as we know. Um, and that's for lots of reasons, um, because, you know, I think we know it's an under-reported area anyway, but we know that. Males are less likely to report domestic abuse than females, even though females are quite unlikely to report it as well. Um, so, but that does include both male and female.
I think it would be interesting, Chair, because as, as you just said, it's a very under-reported area. And it focuses always on the female victim, but not the male victim.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, we could look at, um, a breakdown within, not in every figure unfortunately, but we can in, in certain areas, we can look at a breakdown of, of agendas, definitely.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. What's your on there councillor Wotton? Was he, wasn't he some kind of, um, domestic abuse champion or something, or did I get that wrong? Was he?
I, I was, yeah, I was, I was also, uh, a domestic abuse officer in Bever, Beverley Police.
Oh, fantastic.
Thank you. Um, got a couple more speakers, we've got councillor Linda Wotton followed by councillor Cook. So over to you, uh, councillor Wotton.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I think the report is excellent, it gives us a really good insight of all the good things that are going on that, there. Uh, especially getting the message out. I like the idea of using, uh, the pharmacies like Boots and the Stainsbury's and, and that sort of thing. But I've got a question from item four please, on the sanctuary scheme. Uh, where, um, you're trying to help people to stay in their own homes, which I understand. But how do you deal with the perpetrator in this case? And that's my question for you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Jade, over to you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's a really good question. I think, as I said at the kind of beginning, alluded to at the beginning, we can't really, um, look at domestic abuse without looking at both the victim and, and the perpetrator. And we can't really support people without looking at both. In terms of the sanctuary scheme, it's very much, um, looking at where appropriate. Obviously, because in some cases it's not appropriate to keep people in their own home and actually they are, they are at too high a risk and they, they need to flee. So that is something also, say, at the beginning, that that, it's only where it's appropriate. Um, in terms of the sanctuary scheme, though, there would be a risk assessment that would happen of, of the property. There would be, um, also a safety, um, assessment done with the, um, victim. At looking at, uh, routines, looking at what they, uh, who they are currently have contact with and all of those elements. And there'd also then be the other element of working with the police to make sure that the perpetrator, um, was also part of that safety planning. Uh, in, in, in terms of that, that consideration and that they were, um, eh, that, that certain elements were put in place to make sure that obviously the victim was protected from that person. There is only obviously so much we can, we can do along that, but we can put markers on the house, we can make sure that the police, um, have a marker on the house that knows that it. That that person has suffered from domestic abuse before and that they're at high risk. So if there is ever a call from that particular property, the police know straight away that that, that is obviously a previous domestic abuse. Uh, of house, household with a victim and potentially children within there. Um, so that is something that, that is, is done on a, on a fairly regular basis. And often those cases are managed anyway through our multi-agency risk assessment conference. And within that, we have every single partner present at that, that table, including probation services and police. And looking at how we can, um, uh, obviously work with the perpetrator, work with the victim. Um, and work with children and any other services, services available.
Uh, thank you for that. That gives us an insight to what actually goes on. Thank you, and thank you, Chairman.
Okay, you're welcome. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Jade for your excellent report. So I think, um, I think my comments about the difficulty of obtaining accurate figures. Um, it's much easier obviously to record violence and you've got records through the police and age medical records. Um, but even so, many people wouldn't obviously report domestic violence. So this is, these figures are just the tip of the iceberg, probably, which is really concerning. Um, secondly, um, data often tends to focus on physical, sexual violence and homicides. But, um, I think we mustn't forget about that financial, emotional and coercive control abuse, which are much harder to source and report. And I was wondering how you managed to get, um, data about these types of domestic abuse? And how you could, um, get help to victims about this, whether you had, um, information signposting victims at solicitors or counselling services. It, it's a very tricky one to, um, to pinpoint and to help people with. Um, I think it's brilliant that you've got a programme for perpetrators. Um, I think this is probably quite a new, um, initiative and I think it's brilliant because. Um, they, as you say, that they, um, they need to help to break their cycle of abuse. Um, but I imagine it's hard to work with perpetrators who might not recognise that they are abusing their partner. Um, emotionally or financially or even using coercive control over them. And I, I didn't know whether programmes helped them, um, with these issues, not just the sort of more physical forms of abuse. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Do you, Jade?
Thank you. Um, yes, in terms of data, it is really difficult and thanks for pointing that out because we do find it difficult to get consistent data. Because even the national data that gets collected changes kind of on an annual basis as well. They don't, it's not, uh, it's not something that they record ev- every year. That's why also locally we've struggled to get data since two thousand and sixteen. Um, and there is some national data from two thousand and nineteen, but not local data, um, through the, the crime survey. So again, it is, it is really tricky to do that. Um, we do obviously record consistency, consistently our MARAC data and that goes through to safe lives and they compare it regionally and nationally. That is one thing that we do have, um, and, and obviously police data as well. Um, and we are as a partnership recording, um, that data on a six-monthly basis, analysing that, that partnership. And trying to look at what work we can do as a result of, of that data. In terms of the police and how they record data though, that did change, um, kind of the end of last year, beginning of this year, around how they report, uh, uh, report and record crime. Because initially, um, they were, domestic abuse wouldn't come out as domestic abuse. It wouldn't be, that's what it wouldn't, it wouldn't be called domestic abuse within the, in the crime, it'd be cr- it'd be crimed as something else. That has now changed and it includes now coercive and controlling behaviour as well. So there is, they normally do a primary crime and a secondary crime so that we understand, uh, what that first crime is. And then obviously what elements are, are within there around domestic abuse. So the, the access to the officer's data is now much, much better. And that, that obviously, which will hopefully see the impact that within, within the next year or so, as a result of, of that, that changing. Um, but, but it does include coercive controlling behaviour as well and the emotional abuse, financial abuse, um, not just that more, you know, traditional physical abuse. But easier to recognise and I think that's the, and that's the other thing around the, uh, that I mentioned in the report around the central repository system. Where we're looking at our standard to medium risk assessments that all agencies do on a regular basis. And the reason we're looking at, at, have a central repository for that is so that we can start to recognise coercive control and behaviour. Because we know that that happens over time and it's a pattern over time. So what we want to be able to do is collect all of that data and then over time, if we see that and start to emerge. We'll then be able to look at that case much earlier than we normally would do and support that victim. So that, that's the aim of all of that, using the legislation to our advantage to be able to do that. In terms of coercive controlling behaviour and, um, looking at trying to get that message out there and working with, I suppose, uh, agencies, businesses. All of our statutory agencies are really on board with that and we work with them on a regular basis. So they, they have, um, information, they have training, they have, um, posters, leaflets around coercive controlling behaviour. And particularly because we have that very, um, high-profile domestic homicide review within Lincolnshire with the Hart brothers as well. Um, they had lived a lifetime of coercive controlling behaviour by their father and didn't even recognise it themselves until. Actually, they were sat in a police station and they saw a poster and realised that that's, that was their life. Um, so as a result of that, actually a lot of work's been done, um, and a lot of learnings come from that review. And we've done a really big event last year with, uh, sorry, beginning of this year with hairdressers, barbers and estate agents. That was initially in West Indies, but, uh, open to all of, all of the county. We're, and we are going to have some more of those events when we're allowed, um, we will have some more of those events. Um, but that was very much about, uh, places that people go to on a normal, a reg-, normal, regular basis. Or when they are trying to flee domestic abuse, such as an estate agent or potentially a solicitor. Raising awareness with those agencies to make sure that they can support victims when, when needed and when they can. Um, and we've been doing quite a lot of social media work around that as well, particularly through COVID, COVID-19. But now hairdressers and barbers and those, those types of people are now open again. Um, we are looking as a partnership of how we can support them again to work with our victims of domestic abuse and make that a safe place for people to go.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Lawton wishing to speak. Councillor Lawton.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Um, really welcome this reassuring report. Um, so, and I, I echo the words of councillor Wotton on the, um, participation of retail outlets. I think it's an excellent idea. Uh, on that question, I read about the, the code word that is, uh, will, will be used to, uh, for victims to immediate, to, to. Identify the fact that they need immediately support. And I see that, um, uh, the report says that more details to be announced in due course. But do we have an update when that's likely to happen or has it, has it already happened? Uh, I further, we're really, uh, I'm pleased with the, um, the work we do as district councillors and county councillors. The, the rapport between the two has made a big difference, I think, on the way that Lincolnshire is ahead of the, uh, ahead of, uh, ahead of other authorities in this. But I would be interested to know, um, what the, uh, what the, um, input of this code word, what progress that's made. And I'd also like to know, on the question of refugees, which are, I visited them myself, they're wonderful places. Have staffing issues been a problem, uh, in refugees, uh, during the, uh, the pandemic and the lockdown period? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Presumably the code will be something like Ask Angela, but, uh, no doubt Jade, no doubt Jade will tell us more.
That will be interesting to find out. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lawton. Yes, um, uh, we haven't had any further detail about the code word. Um, I am due to be on a national call, um, next Tuesday, so I hopefully might get a little bit more detail about that. Um, but I think councillor Pepper is absolutely right, it will be something like the Ask Angela campaign, which obviously started.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was obviously launched in Lincolnshire and developed by Lincolnshire. So it'll be something, I'm sure, similar to that, but I know they're working with the national agencies to try and look at what the best code word would be, um.
Yeah, distress word, yeah.
Uh, absolutely, so that they could go to any counter in a supermarket and, and say that, or, or pharmacy, or wherever it might be, and actually be able to use that word and people understand what that means.
Really good.
Um, really, really positive. Um, in terms of refugees, no, we haven't had any staffing issues in Lincolnshire, but that's because we've actually had, um, we've had. Our services have been really kind of innovative in the way they've managed things. So if they've had, um, where they've redeployed people within their own agency if they've needed to. So where, for example, our, we did have staff kind of going into hospitals, working with our A and E and maternity services. And when obviously COVID-19 happened and the risk to our staff was too high for them to do that. Um, we, we, they looked at redeploying them into other areas. So we were utilising staff where, where it was best needed. And if it was needed to be redeployed into a refuge, they redeployed them into refuge to support people. Um, but actually, um, as I said earlier, our, our levels are always fairly high in terms of our refugees anyway. So we, we've not had, we've not seen a huge increase and we've not seen a decrease, it's just stayed very stable and managed that through that service. Although we've had, have had some extra funding, um, to, from, um, the MOJ, so Ministry of Justice has some extra funding for the OPCC that's been awarded sixty-four thousand pound. Um, and that has given us some extra refuge staff.
Yeah.
To support our refugees. Um, we've also had some, a small amount of extra lon-, uh, extra staffing available through the NHCLG funding that wasn't COVID-19 related. But that has given us a little bit of extra capacity there. Um, and there's also some extra funding that we weren't able to apply for, but the charities were able to apply for. Um, and that was for refuge as well. So, um, we have, where needed, we've got some extra support in there and, and that's just given us extra capacity to be able to, to deal with. The, you know, the pandemic as, as well as, um, the normal, the normal kind of capacity issues that everybody has all the time anyway. So it's been, it's been really, it's been managed really, really well.
That gives me a great deal of comfort. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Just, uh, one thing I just thought of Jade, uh, if I could. As, as councillors, if we receive, um, information of a domestic abuse incident, uh, from one of our constituents. If it's a matter of violence or whatever, one would presume they're dull, nine-nine-nine, it'd get dealt with that way. But, uh, if we keep getting drip-fed about a certain, and I'm just making this up as I go along. If we get drip-fed something, um, from one of our constituents or an ongoing abuse. And they want us to hear about it, what, what do we do? Who's our first port to call? Do we telephone the police or do we contact yourselves?
I think the best thing to, obviously if someone's at immediate danger, you're absolutely right, then you would want to call the police. Um, you'd encourage them to, but if you felt that someone's at immediate danger, you would call the police. I, I think, I suppose as we, we all would as, as general members of the public even, you know, we would, we would do that. Um, however, if it's something that you're, someone is disclosing to you. However, if it's something that you're, someone is disclosing to you and obviously speaking to you on a regular basis and it's not that immediate danger type element, then the best thing for you to do would be to talk to our Eden Link service, which is our domestic abuse specialist service that we commission in Lincolnshire. Talk to them about the situation, explain what you're concerned about and they will advise you how to support that person and what to encourage them to do. Obviously you can't, unless, unless, as I said, you, if you told somebody that detail and that service professional felt that it was a high risk victim and that it was really, really concerning, we could, they could do a MARAC referral without that person's consent. Ideally though, we want people to consent to those things and we want people to be involved and engaged because it means we can support them better. But the advice is call Eden Links, they will support you with whatever, whatever advice you need and support you to speak to that person in the right way.
And is all members aware of the Eden Links contact details? Where would they find that information Jade?
It's all available. If you just put Eden Links into Google, it will come up. And there's a full website and their contact details on, right on the, on the front of page.
Okay, thank you. I can't see any further speakers there, but I'm well aware that I put it in when you was in mid-flow there Jade, but I do, did get the distinct feeling you were getting to the end of the report. Have you got anything further to say?
The only other element that I wanted to say was around the funding, which I have mentioned slightly. We were successful to receive funding from a bid that we made to the MHCLG for £187,000. And that was to, that is to develop, we develop a consistent countywide sanctuary scheme for people suffering domestic abuse in Lincolnshire. We do, each district does currently operate some level of target hardening or sanctuary scheme within Lincolnshire. But it varies so much across the districts. What we're looking at doing through this money is providing a more consistent approach, a more consistent risk assessment process. And having at the end of that year, because it is only a year's funding, but at the end of that year, having an agreed countywide protocol across the whole of Lincolnshire to support that. And that's very much the aim of that funding. So, and that will also include working with the police, with their crime reduction officers and a slight increase in that capacity there. So we can do, hopefully, hopefully, once we've gone into a little bit, little bit more of normality, we can take that forward even further. We are, we are forging ahead with it though, even due to COVID-19, we are forging ahead with that project. And there was also then the £64,000 from the Ministry of Justice, but I've already mentioned that. And that's for extra capacity through COVID-19. And that's it, Chair, and that's my, my report.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that very comprehensive report Jade. It's very interesting. Our actions for this agenda item is that we're invited to consider and comment on the contents of this report and the council's role in driving forward the domestic abuse agenda in Lincolnshire. I think we've fully covered that and I can't see any more speakers, so I'd personally move that we receive and note the report. Could I have a second for that please? You'd like to put in the chat bar. I think we've got councillor Ron Oxby there, is that correct Ron?
Well, yes, as well as somebody else. I don't know who it was, Chair, but I will second it necessarily.
Okay, I'm happy with that. So we'll continue. So Emily, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Aaron.
Please say for against or abstain.
Councillor Aaron is muted.
Thank you councillor Clark. Councillor Cook. For councillor Lawton. Councillor Oxby. Councillor Pepper. Councillor Linda Wotton. Councillor Ray Wotton. Thank you. That's unanimous, Chair.
Okay, thank you. That now concludes the business of the meeting. Thank you everyone for your attendance. You may now leave the meeting by using the red phone icon on the taskbar to end the call. Thank you very much, everyone.